Good morning, we're gonna get started. I ask for your cooperation. Thank you very much. If the members will take their seat. Two, we have our quorum established. Okay. Our folks, I ask you all to please hold the voices down. Thank you. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Joey Ferginay of the Block Church. Alright, he is here today as a guest of Councilman Al Taubenberger. I would ask all members, guests, and visitors to please rise.
Good morning. Let us bow our heads and pray. God our Father, you are so gracious and merciful. We don't deserve how good you are and how loving you've been. So with Thanksgiving, we offer this moment as praise. We know your mercies are fresh each morning, brand-new for all who call on you and receive by faith the favor and wisdom you offer. Each day is a gift, and today we unwrap this opportunity with great enthusiasm, passion, and also trepidation. Less of us, more of you. If we decrease, you increase, not our truth but your truth, not our will but your will. Jesus make us more like you. Help us love like you, see the world like you, heal the broken like you, be patient like you, and do unto others how you did to us. Because while we were far from you, full of pride and selfish indignation, you came in and gave us abundant life, forgiveness, and limitless opportunity. We become new creation under your sacrifice and shed blood on the cross. We rise because you resurrected, and it is only you who can raise our city, raise our children, raise our convicted, raise our single mothers, and raise our neighborhoods back to life. Help us live in such a way that no one will stumble because of us, and no one will find fault with our work. And all we do help us show we are true workers of God. We patiently endure troubles and hardships, calamities of every kind, or even working to exhaustion for your name. Let us prove ourselves by our purity, our understanding, our patience, our kindness, by the Spirit within us and by our sincere love. May your power within us serve our city. We serve you, God, whether people honor us or despise us, whether they slander us or praise us. We are honest, even if they call us imposters. We are faithful, even if we are ignored. Whether in office or not, our hearts ache for our city, and we always have joy. We might be poor, but we still give spiritual riches to others. We may own nothing, yet we have everything. Please today, teach us to offer hope to others, even those who we don't think deserve it. We choose not to just be good Philadelphians, but good Samaritans and citizens of heaven. We are ambassadors to our city, and we will treat the least of these as if, as if they were you. I pray wisdom over this body today. Give new insights into minds of your leaders. You are the father of lights. Creativity is what you do. Love is who you are. So show us how to solve problems with ingenuity, to answer the cries of the addict, to protect our vulnerable children, to shape young minds for good, to protect life in the womb and foster life beyond it. We are resolute. My city, my responsibility. Our city, our responsibility. As we near our final amen, let us raise a hallelujah and a victorious declaration that you've never lost a battle, and you never will. We thank you that you could have put anyone here at any time in history. You could have put Abraham or Moses, Esther or Elijah, or the Apostle Paul even, but instead you chose us to carry out our city's legacy of freedom from slavery, equality from bondage and identity as children of God. So we cry out for an overflow of goodness, an abundance of influence, unexpected blessing and childlike wonder. We declare the best days for Philadelphia are ahead of us, and we won't be moved. So finally, let us agree that politics won't shake us, partisan pettiness won't break us, and hate won't change us. We are not waiting on peace. We are makers of peace who carry confidence directly from heaven. This is your city. We are your people, in Philadelphia as it is in heaven, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much Pastor. Genuinely appreciate those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you very much. And our next order of business will be the approval of the Journal. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the meeting of Thursday, October 31st, 2019 be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably second at the Journal of the meeting of Thursday, October 31st, 2019. Stand and approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan. Councilman, hold on a second. Folks, can you all please, like, stop talking? Thank you. Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to the gentleman. Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to thank and welcome everyone who has come down to witness their government in action today. We genuinely appreciate you being here. We hope your stay here today is a knowledgeable one, but more importantly, a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. Again, thank you for being here. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker, who presented a resolution honoring Charmaine Matlock Turner. With Ms. Matlock Turner and those accompanying her, please join the Councilwoman at the podium. I'm sorry. Let me do this first, Councilwoman. And I would like to recognize one of my former bosses, Councilwoman Marion Tasko. And joining Councilwoman Parker, we have Councilwoman Gimm, Councilman Dom, Councilwoman Bass, Councilman Green, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Heenan, and Councilwoman Gimm. Yeah, got you, huh?
Hey, Philadelphia, you all don't know it, but we just pulled off the greatest heist in the world this morning. Thank you, Mr. President. For those of you who are, who are at home watching us on television, there are few men and women who can make a noteworthy mention of their commitment to our great city, like the woman standing to my left with the Delta red jacket on, with strong ties to both west, northwest Philadelphia, great service in north Philadelphia, and throughout our entire city. We know her as a lot of things. Her name is formerly, as the President noted, Charmaine Matlock Turner. However, to me, she is Tony's wife. She is Ayanna's mother. She is Naema's mother, and she is Josh's grandmother. And if both Charmaine Matlock Turner and Marion Tasko are in the same room, neither of them go by their names. Their names are one word each. If you're talking about Charmaine Matlock Turner, the only thing you say, especially if you're in an Election Day war room, "General." And when Tasko is in the room, she is "Boss." So it is a great honor and privilege for us to present Charmaine Matlock Turner with this resolution today. She is the president of the Urban Affairs Coalition, and you are going to hear an overview from all of our council colleagues about her contributions to our great city through a plethora of organizations. The only thing I want to mention for the record, Charmaine, is that I did not think it was humanly possible to have served as a community organizer, a campaign manager, a committee person, to work in corporate America, the healthcare industry, the nonprofit sector, and to be one of those people we watch on Sunday morning. And you'll hear about that a little bit more. Let's give a round of applause as my colleagues come forward to make this presentation. So we'll know again for the record that this is a resolution honoring and recognizing Charmaine Matlock Turner, Urban Affairs Coalition President and CEO. Whereas, eighth district resident and my neighbor, the Urban Affairs Coalition formerly GP UAC, with more than 350 employees, in partnership with a diverse board of directors made up of business, nonprofit, and community leaders, unites government, businesses, neighborhoods, and individual initiatives to improve the quality of life in the region, and... I'm gonna try to stay far from her, because she might be a little bit upset at me right now. Charmaine is the co-chair of the Poverty Committee, and I kinda lied to her all morning. So I'm sorry, Charmaine, from an impromptu meeting to everything else, but we love you. And I worked under the General in one of my first elections, and thank you so much for all your service. Whereas, the organization's efforts are focused in four areas: improving life chances for youth and young adults, building wealth in low-income communities, forging strategic partnerships, and strengthening the nonprofit sector through fiscal sponsorship. The organization has successfully managed more than $1 billion in social capital over its 50-year history, and...
Whereas, successful UAC initiatives include programs to end homelessness, HIV/AIDS education, a bankers collaborative that drives community investment, a multi-partner citywide effort to close the digital divide, a citywide campaign to employ Philadelphia's low-income teens during the summer, a partnership in the city of Philadelphia's free, quality pre-K programs, co-convening of the Philadelphia's Read by Fourth campaign, and consulting to improve contracting and employment opportunities for women and people of color in commercial construction, and parents who are trying to fight for their public schools, and...
Whereas Charmaine Matlock Turner serves on numerous committees, including her recent appointment by Council President Darrell Clark as co-chair of the Special Committee on Poverty Reduction and Prevention, and her appointment by Governor Tom Wolf to the Pennsylvania Redistricting Reform Commission. Mayor Jim Kenny appointed her to the Workforce Development Steering Committee. She serves on the Independence Health Group Advisory Board for Consumer and Business Affairs. She chairs the Fashion District Economic Opportunity Oversight Committee, and she serves on the Comcast Innovation Center Economic Opportunity Oversight Committee, and...
I'm gonna transition the mic to someone that is no stranger to this room, Councilmember Marion Tasko.
Whereas, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Whereas, Charmaine Matlock Turner serves on the following civic, government, business, and education boards: Pierce College, the Regional Federal Reserve Bank, Banks Economic and the Economic and Community Advisory Council, Entrepreneur Works, the Chamber of Commerce for Greater Philadelphia, and...
The Children Scholarship Fund of Philadelphia, Uplift Solutions, the Philadelphia Council for College and Career Success, Foundation's National Advisory Board, and United Way of Greater Philadelphia, and Southern New Jersey. She is a co-founder and chair of the 20-year-old West Oak Lane Charter School, a founding member of the National Network of Fiscal Sponsors, and a guest host on 6 ABC's Public Affairs Television Program, Inside Story, and...
Whereas, the Council of the City of Philadelphia is pleased and proud to honor and recognize this sorority sister... and confidante, Charmaine Matlock Turner, Urban Affairs Coalition President and CEO, on the occasion of UAC's 50th anniversary and the 20th anniversary of her leadership with the distinction of shattering another glass ceiling, being the first woman at the helm of UAC. Now therefore be it.
I would like to also take a moment to acknowledge Ms. Matlock Turner's work as it relates to making sure that we provide high-quality job opportunities for our young people throughout the summer, and most recently throughout the year. Also acknowledge her hard work and dedication. Next week, we'll be giving away close to thousands of Thanksgiving Day baskets to families in need. But most importantly, her tutoring me and mentoring me around the issue of redlining, working with UAC to hold banks accountable to make sure they're investing in neighborhoods, predominantly with people of color, and also making sure that when we address the issue of gentrification, individuals have the opportunity to become first-time home buyers and gentrifying neighbors. I'm gonna personally just say thank you for your efforts and working with me along those issues. Therefore, be resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that it hereby honors and recognizes Charmaine Matlock Turner, CEO of the Urban Affairs Coalition, and...
Further resolved... Further resolved that the path and legacy has been set for another 50 more years, alright, because of all of the accomplishments and partners that have been brought together and how serve in Philadelphia and surrounding counties. Further be resolved that the engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Charmaine Matlock Turner as evidence of the sincere sentiments of this legislative body. Congratulations.
And for today's Inside Story, the Chair recognizes Charmaine Matlock Turner for remarks.
Now, my office knows that I am a stickler for preparing remarks, so I cannot believe how you got me here today with no notes or anything in front of me, but in front of this wonderful, wonderful group of people who I've had the opportunity to work with over the years. Some part of my career, I was sitting in some of those seats back there as a, as a city council staffer. I worked in Harrisburg, both in the House and in the Senate. I rode around with my good friend, Councilwoman Marion Tasko, and we always talked about what we could do to make a difference in the world. I babysat her son, she babysat my kids, as we were out knocking on doors and trying to make a difference. And I always remember how she was so helpful and supportive to me, that I was always, always, always committed to make sure that I would take one more minute, one more day, one more call, to be there to support the men and women who I know are committed to driving change and to make sure that the City of Philadelphia is a great place for us to live, work, and play. So I just want to thank Council President Clark and all of city council for this wonderful recognition, not just of me, but really the 50 years of an organization that started right around the corner after the assassination of Dr. King at 12th and Market Street, that was what the PS, which was the PSFS building, where people came together, led by an iconic leader, Charles Charlie Bowser, and other community activists who said, "We can find a way to work together if we invest our time, our talent, and treasure in our city and in our community." And I hope that I've been able to keep the faith for that work, and I will continue as long as I can to make sure that Philadelphia is a place for us all. Thank you all very, very much.
Council be at ease. Thank you. Thank you. We're gonna move on. Folks, if we can get a little bit quiet, we have to move on. Thank you. At this point, I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Blackwell. I believe Councilwoman wants to recognize some individuals, and then a call on you, Councilwoman, to bring forth our next resolution.
Thank you very much. I would like to recognize from the heart of the third district, some wonderful students from Long Shrewth Elementary School. They are in the balcony, and we hope they will stand...
There you go. Thank you. Welcome. Thank you all for coming down. And at this time, I would also like to recognize Councilwoman Blackwell, who presented a resolution naming the 5,000 block of Baltimore Avenue Representative Al Dumas Boulevard. Would the Representative Al Dumas and those accompanying him, please join the Councilwoman at the podium. And we also have Councilman Greenly, Councilwoman Gimm, Councilman O., Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, and Councilman Dom, and Councilwoman Parker, and Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, Councilwoman, hold on one second. Folks, could I ask you all to please stop talking? Or go in, go in the hallway, you know?
Thank you, Mr. President. We are very pleased to be able to honor one of our own. When Lucian Blackwell ran for city council, and after Charlie Durham resigned to run for judge, and then he chose a gentleman named Algia Dumas, Al Dumas, to succeed him in the 188th Legislative District. This gentleman who's been around us, he was a committeeman in the 46th Ward, where Lou was Ward Leader, and I currently serve. Now he's a committee person in the 51st Ward, so he still serves. He moved... Now he's a committee person in the 51st Ward, so he still serves, he moved over a little Now he's a committee person in the 51st Ward, so he still serves, he moved over a little from being a committeeman in the 46th to the 51st. from being a committeeman in the 46th to the 51st. Many of you saw his sign up, he kept it up for years, on Baltimore Avenue that said Many of you saw his sign up, he kept it up for years, on Baltimore Avenue that said the 188th Legislative District. the 188th Legislative District. But I might note that on October 18th, he turned 91 years old, and he is still around But I might note that on October 18th, he turned 91 years old, and he is still around to be involved in all aspects of politics in my district and in our city, and we are to be involved in all aspects of politics in my district and in our city, and we are happy to honor him. happy to honor him. Thank you. Thank you.
We thank you for your service. We thank you for your service. This morning, we are, let's start with the top here. This morning, we are, let's start with the top here. We are naming the 5,000 block of Baltimore Avenue Representative Al Dumas Boulevard. We are naming the 5,000 block of Baltimore Avenue Representative Al Dumas Boulevard. That calls for a repeat. That calls for a repeat. Representative Al Dumas Boulevard, in honor of State Representative Al Dumas and his Representative Al Dumas Boulevard, in honor of State Representative Al Dumas and his dedication to public service. dedication to public service.
Whereas, born in Birmingham, Alabama, on October 18th, 1928, State Representative Whereas, born in Birmingham, Alabama, on October 18th, 1928, State Representative Algia Dumas arrived in the city of Philadelphia in 1947. Algia Dumas arrived in the city of Philadelphia in 1947. Ambitious and determined, he set out to make an impact. Ambitious and determined, he set out to make an impact.
And whereas, over the next 60 years, Representative Dumas focused on achievement, And whereas, over the next 60 years, Representative Dumas focused on achievement, establishing his own brand of success in a plethora of endeavors that reached into establishing his own brand of success in a plethora of endeavors that reached into a broad cross-section of the city. a broad cross-section of the city. In 1968, he fulfilled one of his long-held goals as a public servant, and that was winning In 1968, he fulfilled one of his long-held goals as a public servant, and that was winning an election to the Pennsylvania House of Representatives 190th District seat by special an election to the Pennsylvania House of Representatives 190th District seat by special election, and... election, and...
Whereas Representative Dumas unfortunately was unable to repeat his historical accomplishment Whereas Representative Dumas unfortunately was unable to repeat his historical accomplishment and win reelection. and win reelection. However, he forged ahead and continued making a positive impact on the community, and... However, he forged ahead and continued making a positive impact on the community, and...
Whereas in 1971, he was elected as the President of the West Philadelphia Branch Whereas in 1971, he was elected as the President of the West Philadelphia Branch NAACP. NAACP. In 1976, Representative Al Dumas was elected as a Democrat to the Pennsylvania House of In 1976, Representative Al Dumas was elected as a Democrat to the Pennsylvania House of Representatives 188th Legislative District by special election to serve the remaining Representatives 188th Legislative District by special election to serve the remaining 1975 term of the Honorable Lucian E. Blackwell, and... 1975 term of the Honorable Lucian E. Blackwell, and...
Whereas Representative Dumas is currently a resident of Southwest Philadelphia. Whereas Representative Dumas is currently a resident of Southwest Philadelphia. He was married to the late Mary Fanny Dumas. He was married to the late Mary Fanny Dumas. For over 60 years, he has four children, Tamara Dumas, Melita Dumas Staley, Elijah Junior, For over 60 years, he has four children, Tamara Dumas, Melita Dumas Staley, Elijah Junior, and Gwendolyn Donaldson Dumas. and Gwendolyn Donaldson Dumas.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby Now therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby also names the 5,000 block of Baltimore Avenue Representative Al Dumas Boulevard, in honor also names the 5,000 block of Baltimore Avenue Representative Al Dumas Boulevard, in honor of State Representative Al Dumas and his dedication to public service. of State Representative Al Dumas and his dedication to public service.
It takes a lot of work to make those shoes look that cool. It takes a lot of work to make those shoes look that cool. I'm just gonna tell you. I'm just gonna tell you. Further resolved, that an engrossed copy of this resolution are presented to Representative Further resolved, that an engrossed copy of this resolution are presented to Representative Dumas as a sincere expression of the Council of the City of Philadelphia's gratitude, admiration, Dumas as a sincere expression of the Council of the City of Philadelphia's gratitude, admiration, and recognition. and recognition.
Chair recognizes Representative Dumas and his son, who will make remarks. Chair recognizes Representative Dumas and his son, who will make remarks.
Good morning. Good morning.
Morning. Morning.
My father would want me to say, he, the microphone gets in his way sometimes, so, My father would want me to say, he, the microphone gets in his way sometimes, so, you know, he asks me to speak for him. you know, he asks me to speak for him. My father would first want me to thank Councilwoman Janie Blackwell for her introduction of My father would first want me to thank Councilwoman Janie Blackwell for her introduction of Resolution Number 190753, as well as the whole of Philadelphia City Council for their Resolution Number 190753, as well as the whole of Philadelphia City Council for their recognition of my father, State Representative Al Dumas, for his lifetime of public service recognition of my father, State Representative Al Dumas, for his lifetime of public service and fighting for the community. and fighting for the community. This recognition means something, and it's especially gratifying because it comes from This recognition means something, and it's especially gratifying because it comes from a body made up of individuals who know and understand the importance of public service. a body made up of individuals who know and understand the importance of public service. From fighting like hell to stop a gas or water shut-off, to helping young people get From fighting like hell to stop a gas or water shut-off, to helping young people get summer jobs, if it helps keep people stay in a position to one day possibly thrive, summer jobs, if it helps keep people stay in a position to one day possibly thrive, it means something. it means something. My one regret is my mom. My one regret is my mom.
That's all right, she's here. That's all right, she's here. She's here. She's here.
Mary Dumas is not present among us to see Dad receive this recognition, and to remind Mary Dumas is not present among us to see Dad receive this recognition, and to remind him, "Please, Dumas, please don't wear that tie. him, "Please, Dumas, please don't wear that tie. Please, it doesn't match." Please, it doesn't match." But Mom, as you see, he matches beautifully. But Mom, as you see, he matches beautifully. Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor, be at ease. Counselor, be at ease. Thank you, and again, congratulations, and thank you for your service, Representative. Our next order of business is communications, and the Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the Chief Clerk. And Mr. Decker, when you're ready, please read those messages from the mayor.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on November 6, 2019, I signed all the bills that were passed by Council on October 24, 2019, and that on November 6 and November 12, 2019, I signed all the bills that were passed by Council on October 31, 2019, except Bill Number 190640, which I am returning without my signature. And I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain properties located in the 2nd Councilmatic District, which will be transferred by the city to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority by conveyance of such properties to the Philadelphia Land Bank. And an ordinance submitting Section 13100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Water, Sewer, and Stormwater Rates to provide for enforcement of prevailing wage provisions of the code that apply in connection with the receipt of charity water rates. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 299 by striking from the city plan from a point approximately 342 feet southwest of Mathias Street to its terminus approximately 58 feet further southwardly therefrom. And an ordinance authorizing the paving of Parker Avenue from a point approximately 156 feet southwest of Mathias Street to a point approximately 186 feet further southwestwardly therefrom. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development all or a portion of certain parcel or parcels of land in and about the area bounded by University Avenue, Civic Center Boulevard, Hamilton Street, and 34th Street for further conveyance, and authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city to enter into a lease agreement to lease back a portion of the property to the city. And an ordinance authorizing the Procurement Department to enter into one or more agreements with a vendor or vendors for the purchase of servicing and servicing of online legal research services, investigative tools, and related goods and services. And an ordinance authorizing the issuance from time to time of one or more series of general obligation bonds to provide funds to refund certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the city of Philadelphia, authorizing the mayor, city controller, and city solicitor or a majority of them to sell the bonds at public or private negotiated sale, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. You have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions this morning.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduce 10 bills and one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
And ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Cobbs Creek, Baltimore Avenue, 49th Street, Graves Avenue, 58th Street, Springfield Avenue, and Cobbs Creek Parkway. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city of Philadelphia to convey to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land in and about the area bounded by South 50th Street, Pentridge Street, South 51st Street, and Willow's Avenue for further conveyance. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Havreford Avenue, 42nd Street, Palton Avenue, Market Street, and 46th Street. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Ogden Street, 40th Street, Parrish Street, and Preston Street. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Locust Street, 49th Street, Baltimore Avenue, and 58th Street. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Cedar Avenue, Baltimore Avenue, and 47th Street. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Spring Garden Street, Lancaster Avenue, 38th Street, Hamilton Street, and 31st Street. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Chestnut Street, 45th Street, Ludlow Street, and 46th Street. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Spruce Street, 34th Street, Civic Center Boulevard, and University Avenue. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development all or a portion of a certain parcel or parcels of land in and about the area bounded by University Avenue, Civic Center Boulevard, Hamilton Street, and 34th Street for further conveyance, and authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a lease agreement to lease back a portion of the property to the city.
Those 10 bills just read by the Chief Clerk will be referred to the appropriate departments.
And a privileged resolution proclaiming November 16 through 24, 2019, as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week in Philadelphia, and honoring organizations, advocates, and city workers for their work supporting Philadelphia's most vulnerable.
That will be on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Ms., excuse me. Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer six bills, five of them on your behalf, the other one is co-sponsored by Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance submitting Section 9212 of the Philadelphia Code entitled newsstands by revising requirements for sales, design, and advertising. And an ordinance authorizing the Pennsylvania Department of General Services to construct, own, and maintain a proposed set of non-standard bollards at 1503A through 11 Arch Street. And an ordinance authorizing MMB Contractors Incorporated to construct, own, and maintain hardscape patios and accessible ramp and planter boxes at 2225 Spring Garden Street. And an ordinance submitting the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 22nd Street, Market Street, 21st Street, and Ludlow Street. And an ordinance authorizing Aspen Operations to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk cafe at 741 North 23rd Street. And an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on Brown Street between North 22nd Street and Corinthian Streets.
Those six bills just read by the Chief Clerk will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Hina.
Thank you, Council President. Today I introduce two bills and offer one resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance submitting Section 9205 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Sales by allowing for sidewalk sales near the intersection of Cotman Avenue and Busselton Avenue.
Verdict Committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the Procurement Department on behalf of the city of Philadelphia to enter into one or more agreements with a vendor or vendors for the purchase of and servicing of online legal research services, investigative tools, and related goods and services.
Verdict Committee.
And a non-privileged resolution appointing Alexander Balloon to the Board of Directors of the Philadelphia Land Bank.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three bills today.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on the 6,600 block of Calhoun Street both sides. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 299 by striking from the city plan Parker Avenue from a point approximately 342 feet southwest of Mathias Street to its terminus approximately 58 feet further southwestwardly therefrom. And an ordinance authorizing the paving of Parker Avenue from a point approximately 156 feet southwest of Mathias Street to a point approximately 186 feet further southwestwardly therefrom.
Those three bills will be referred to the appropriate committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I have one bill, one resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome, Council President.
And ordinance submitting Bill Number 050670, entitled, an ordinance granting permission to Center City ERUV Corporation in order to demarcate the boundaries of a Center City ERUV District to construct and maintain a clear nylon cord and other ancillary facilities, including a maximum of 10 poles along, over, and in certain public rights of way and city streets. And/or to attach such demarcation facilities to existing facilities owned by other entities authorized by other city ordinances subject to such owner's consent to modify applicable boundaries, all under certain terms and conditions.
Verdict Committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain properties located in the 2nd Councilmatic District, which will be transferred by the city to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority.
That will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kieron Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privilege, one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution... A privileged resolution recognizing the Urban Affairs Coalition on the 50th anniversary of its founding.
In this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one privileged resolution and one bill on behalf of the administration.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And ordinance submitting Chapter 13, 100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Water, Sewer, and Stormwater Rates to provide for enforcement and prevailing wage provisions of the code that apply in connection with the receipt of charity water rates.
Further to committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Charmaine Matlock-Turner, Urban Affairs Coalition President and CEO.
Today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kim.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Topman-Burger.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer three bills.
An ordinance authorizing the City Solicitor on behalf of the city to enter into a multi-year contract with a provider of codification, editing, and marketing services to produce printed and electronic versions of the Philadelphia Code.
Further to committee.
And an ordinance submitting Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by further providing with respect to uses permitted or prohibited in commercial districts.
Further to committee.
And an ordinance submitting Chapter 14, 500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by amending Section 14, 514 entitled FNE Far Northeast Overlay District.
Also for further to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer four bills today.
And ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 195 by striking from the City Plan and vacating a dead-end portion of Cumberland Street extending from Beach Street to its terminus southeastwardly therefrom. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Walnut Street, Front Street, South Street, and Eighth Street. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Broad Street, Snyder Avenue, 7th Street, and Oregon Avenue. And an ordinance authorizing Cosia Massimo to own and maintain an existing exterior building ramp at 2723 East Cumberland Street.
Those four bills will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. No bills, no resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. And our next order of business is reports on the committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell for report from the Committee of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Finance reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read your report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Finance, to which is referred Bill Number 190746 entitled -- An ordinance submitting Section 191508 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Refunds and Forgiveness for Poverty Income to revise the tax rate. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 190746.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 190746. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Maria Kiona Sanchez for report from the Committee on Appropriations.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Appropriations reports four bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read your report.
The Committee on Appropriations, to which is referred Bill Number 190854 entitled -- An ordinance submitting Bill Number 190152 approved June 19, 2019 entitled -- An ordinance to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years 2020 through 2025 inclusive. And Bill Number 190855 entitled -- An ordinance submitting Bill Number 190153 approved June 19, 2019 entitled -- An ordinance to adopt the fiscal 2020 capital budget. And Bill Number 190856 entitled -- An ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2020 from the General Fund, the Grants Revenue Fund, and the Grants Revenue Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions to the General Fund, the Water Fund, the Special Gasoline Tax Fund, and the Aviation Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. And Bill Number 190857 entitled -- An ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2019 from the General Fund, the Grants Revenue Fund, the Aviation Fund, and the Water Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions to the Aviation Fund and the Water Residual Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
The Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the rules of council be suspended as to permit first -- Permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers 190854, 190855, 190856, and 190857.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 190854, 190855, 190856, and 190857. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Bass for report from the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs reports two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs, to which is referred Bill Number 190637 entitled -- An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire free simple title or lesser interest by purchase, dedication, donation, condemnation, agreement in lieu of condemnation, or otherwise, and Sarah Morris Recreation Center located at 5800 Walnut Street for public recreational or other purposes. And Bill Number 190765 entitled -- An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Philadelphia Parks and Recreation on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into a stormwater easement agreement with the School District of Philadelphia to allow for the management of stormwater discharge from the northern portion of the school district parcels located at 3201 Ryan Avenue and 3001 Ryan Avenue by way of overland flow to the adjacent Penny Pack Park. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers 190637 and 190765.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended this day so as to permit first reading of Bills Number 190636, 190765. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And these bills will be on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports on committee. And our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee was the suspension of the rules and been deemed they've had their first reading. They will be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the calendar today, Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions that are on our final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following bills on the second reading and final passage calendars. They are Bill Numbers 190386, 190308, 190446, 190452, 190764, 190782, 190803, 190805,
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that the rules of council be suspended so permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the bills just read by Councilman Heenan. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. The motion carries, and we will consider the consent agenda shortly. Chair now again recognizes
All other bills or resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Councilman. Before considering these resolutions and bills that are on our final passage calendar today, we will have our public comment session. The public comment session will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on the final passage today, if you have not already done so, you may sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the podium in the middle of the council chambers. There's a device on that podium. When the light on that device turns green, it will be your time to speak. When it turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When it turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines to conclude your remarks. We have an exhaustive list of individuals who are interested in testifying, so I will alter the timeframe to allow everybody an opportunity to testify. So you'll be given two minutes to testify, so please, if you have some pre-documented testimony, please adjust it to reflect the two-minute limit. Thank you very much for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, please call the first name on the list.
Deanna Bernie, commenting on 190386.
Good morning. My name is Deanna Bernie. This is the first time I've given testimony. I'm blessed to be here to talk about the Right to Counsel bill. I urge everyone to vote yes on this bill. I bring to this work a lifetime as a teacher, counselor, principal, researcher, educator. Housing has a direct effect on student achievement. If children aren't in school every day and the same school, they lose out. One of Dr. Height's main bills is to increase the percentage of children reading at grade level. At present, it's only 36% of eight-year-olds that read at grade level. That means only one out of every three children. I'll bet if we looked at the individual schools, we would find out that there's a lot of variation between that percentage. Some schools might have 98%, some schools might have 10%. This can also be tied to attendance. In my experience, I've had children have to be evicted. I've had people find housing and then be denied later on. I don't believe that there is an at-risk child in this city. What we have are children in risky environments. When we say "at-risk child," the impetus is that there's something wrong with the child, that the child needs fixing. When we say "children in risky environments," that makes us, as the adults, accountable and responsible for the environments that our children live in. And housing security begets school security. And I think we need to connect the dots between housing, attendance, and the school district does not give attendance data by school. I don't know why. Because I think that this...
You have 30 seconds.
Oh, thank you.
When it turns red, you... Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you. I think that this is a good beginning, this Right to Counsel bill, but I think we really need to drill down on the attendance by school, the reading achievement by school, and get a unified plan to make sure that all of our children are in safe environments, not risky environments. And I thank you. Bless you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Barrett Marshall, commenting on 190386.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm honored to be here on a day that I know is going to be historic for the City of Philadelphia. Thank you, City Council, Council President Clark, and Councilmember Gim for the opportunity to testify, and to all of the cosponsors of this bill to create a tenants' right to counsel. I'm Barrett Marshall, Director of the Philadelphia Eviction Prevention Project and Attorney at Community Legal Services. Our work over the last two years with our incredible partners is a demonstration of the power of representation for tenants. We've proven that when we raise the voices of tenants, we create a better world. Together, we have shown that we can prevent homelessness, stabilize communities, fight racism, and stem the rising tide of poverty in this city. You've heard the statistics. The eviction crisis is disproportionately affecting Black women and their children. It is tearing apart longstanding communities. It's destroying the possibility of a future for so many families, and it's costing us dearly in every way. What we know is that legal representation has the power to change this, the power to create access, to generate equity, and to save lives. We have seen the difference this representation makes. We know that home is our foundation, that stable housing is a health measure. We know that creating stability for individual families leads to healthy children, thriving communities, and a productive city. We know the value that home has for each of us, and we know how to protect it. But what we must know is that we have work to do. Philadelphians will do the work. Our neighbors, our organizers, and our service providers are extraordinary. We will come together, and we will lift each other, as we always have. But we need our city behind us. We need your support. Give us the chance to do what is necessary. Give us the chance to do the work here. We're asking you to invest in all of us, in our survival and in our success, in the incredible ability that Philadelphians have to come together and create real lasting change. We have already begun, and we know what we have to do. We ask that you stick with us, work with us, to save our homes and strengthen our communities. We ask that today, you see the work that needs to be done, you understand our commitment to each other and to our city, you hear the stories of those testifying, and that you pass a tenants' rights to counsel. Thank you.
Frederica Lightford. Frederica Lightford.
Next.
Rashida Phillips, commenting on 190386.
Good morning. My name is Rashida Phillips. Although roughly 3 million people around the country are evicted each year, it is not a coincidence that who gets evicted falls along racial and gender lines, most frequently impacting Black women and their children, and in Philadelphia, impacting Black families disproportionately in spite of their level of income. It is instead by design that we have gotten ourselves here, and it is only by purposeful and intentional design of better policies that we can begin to unravel those structural and institutional inequities that consistently leave Black families and other marginalized and vulnerable people behind. This bill offers a solution that recognizes that legal aid is a cost-effective way of preventing homelessness and can help provide outcomes for families that minimize disruptions to health, safety, employment, and education. PEP, the Mayor's Eviction Prevention Task Force, the Philadelphia Bar Association, and others, the Philly Tenants Union have done the work and the research to show that although the majority of evictions appear to be over money, there is something deeper, more nuanced, more insidious at the base of these evictions, and that the crisis is a systemic issue, not an individual issue, and one that requires a long-term systemic solution. It recognizes, for example, that our city's housing stock is old and deteriorating, particularly in areas of the city that have seen historic disinvestment, and that this leads to housing conditions that by law no resident should be obligated to pay rent for. Yet residents end up paying lifelong prices for their health as their children endure the lifelong impacts of lead poisoning and other harms. They end up with inaccurate eviction records that prevent them from accessing affordable housing for the rest of their lives. This legislation recognizes that because of the desirability of living in our city, our neighborhoods are being rapidly gentrified and seeing disproportionate rent increases and tax increases, such that, according to some studies, more than 12,000 African-Americans in Philadelphia moved out of gentrifying neighborhoods over a 13-year period. Access to justice is a moral imperative. One's ability to access the justice system and defend their shelter and their home cannot be based on who can afford a lawyer. The scales of justice should never be tipped in favor of a landlord's ability to profit. When we talk about ensuring that every tenant who wants one has the right to access a lawyer, we're not just talking about balancing out the justice system so it can do its job better. What we are talking about is a shift in access to opportunity and power, a shift in whose voice gets heard, a shift in who gets access to the sort of information that could change their future. One of the most innovative aspects of this bill is the requirement to provide community education in neighborhoods directly impacted by the eviction crisis to educate and empower tenants and communities on their housing rights and responsibilities. We urge you to pass this bill today. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Agnes Domacase. Commenting on 190386.
Morning. Good morning. My name is Agnes Domacase, and I am a member of One PA. I have lived at 1929 Yubus Street for over 15 years, serving as a block captain. The property was bought by a 31-year-old developer from out of town. He doubled my rent. He made me pay a water bill when I never had to pay one before. There was a huge burden for my husband and me because we were both retired and lived on a fixed income. We struggled to make the payments every month, but we never missed one. The landlord often sent people into the apartment unannounced. One time, my husband had a tense interaction with one of the workers. Out of nowhere, we were told we had to move out. When we got the letter, we were upset, scared, and confused. We didn't understand why we would have to move out. My husband was fed up, and he just said, "Let's go." I asked him, "Where will we go? Where are we going to move? We don't have any money." There were so many strange things happening that he didn't care. He was just ready to go. I told him I would call the rental office and find out what was going on. When I called, I was so hurt to find out that the reason they were ready to put us out was because some simple miscommunication between my husband and a maintenance worker. But we both lived next door to my house. My mother lived next door to my house. I couldn't imagine leaving the community that has meant so much to my family. Wealthy people have access to support, and they have a lawyer. Why don't we have one? We deserve the same. All studies show people are less likely to be evicted and have better outcomes with lawyers and in eviction court. With the eviction crisis here in Philadelphia, why wouldn't we take this step to keep people in their homes? I urge City Council to pass the right to counsel today.
Thank you.
Gabrielle Green. Commenting on 190386.
Morning. Good morning. Gabrielle Green. By the grace of God, I've had the wonderful privilege of being both a realtor and an attorney. As such, I've had the opportunity to see firsthand the interrelatedness between laws and public policy, as well as the direct effect that these have on individual lives, particularly with respect to housing in Philadelphia. It is my wholehearted belief that this bill will positively impact the lives of thousands of Philadelphians by decreasing the amount of homelessness, eliminating the extreme disparity in representation during landlord-tenant court, while also saving the city thousands of dollars in unnecessary evictions. In my career as a realtor, I've worked with low-income families seeking housing and have watched a number of them get denied, not because of their inability to pay rent, but because of a previous landlord-tenant complaint filed against them, a complaint that many of them didn't fully understand, which led them to appear in court to defend themselves with limited knowledge of the law and without representation. In my career as an attorney, I have found myself constantly trying to navigate Philadelphia's municipal codes and rules of civil procedure. Even after three years of law school and time in practice, I am still at a loss for words. I'm still constantly asking other attorneys for guidance and asking questions myself. As I know, I'm not the only one. So how can we expect individuals who have not been trained on the law to understand how to navigate this complex and often confusing system? I recognize that with every step towards progress, there's bound to be opposition. But with this bill, there doesn't have to be. 80% of landlords have attorneys in landlord-tenant court, whereas 11% of tenants do. This bill is not tipping the scales in favor of tenants to benefit them; it's making an attempt to level them. If there's one thing I've learned in practice, it is that those with the privilege, means, and opportunity have a responsibility to help provide for those who don't. I've personally never faced eviction, but the reality is that evictions disproportionately affect and impact Black female heads of households, which means I easily could have been, and that is why I am here.
Curtis Shiver.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I'm Curtis Shiver. I'm here today to represent the bill, hopefully get passed today. I'm just thankful for this opportunity... I'm just thankful for this opportunity today to come up here and speak. I am a previous tenant. I was faced with some financial difficult stages during my process of landlord tenant issues. This bill today is truly needed in our city to help families overcome such hurdles of becoming more distressed through the process and protecting families from financial burdens. It also helps avoid the homelessness and mental disturbance amongst homes and criminal activities that's going on throughout our city. We all view those criminal activity that goes on throughout the day in our city. These are most of the issues on why we face most of the criminal activities in our city. I am a previously returning citizen back into our city, and I previously was working with the City of Philadelphia and managed about 280 parks throughout our city, and I witnessed some of the troubles that I used to face throughout our city. And the housing problems that we face today with the landlords are some of the reasons that we need to pass this bill today. So I hope you guys take into consideration my statement today and get this bill passed.
Thank you.
Frederica Lightford. Commenting on 190386.
Good afternoon. Got peace and blessings to all. My name is Frederica Lightford. This is my first time here in City Council. I'm here because I support the right to counsel. It's very, very important that we have counsel represent us. Sometimes we walk into certain situations, and we don't know what it's like. I've never been evicted, but I have had counsel to represent me, and it was a victory. So I think it's very important that we pay attention. A lot of people are being evicted. They don't know their rights, and they don't know that they can have counsel, you know, present them when they are in situations where they have to go before laws that they don't understand. They don't understand the meaning of it. But I'm here to say that it's a no-brainer. We need it. Thank you.
Angela McIver. Commenting on 190386.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Again, I'm Angela McIver, Chief Executive Officer of the Fair Housing Rights Center in southeastern Pennsylvania. The mission is to ensure equal access to housing opportunities for all people. Now that the Kenny administration is implementing more measures to ensure equity... Okay, thank you. Equity and equality is befitting that more interests occur in housing. Providing financial support for people that face evictions from their homes is important because that stabilizes families, neighborhoods, and the economy. The right to counsel also indirectly helps residents achieve the goal of securing housing because regardless of the disposition in eviction court, most residents will seek to be rehoused. Having effective counsel during the eviction hearing increases the likelihood that a future housing provider will evaluate a prospective tenant based on a true account of a former landlord-tenant relationship, a fair and just disposition, and access to electronic records that are free from error. Within the eviction crisis is a lesser-known story that entails residents whose situations are complex and convoluted because their eviction predicament also entails one or more fair housing allegations. For example, when a disabled person needs a reasonable accommodation and comes to the Fair Housing Rights Center for assistance, most times we work with that person to achieve the request, which enables the same person to remain in their home, or terminate at least early without penalty. When the process fails, then the person can seek social justice. From March 2018 through March 2019, 190 intakes occurred. 56% of those intakes involve residents of Philadelphia, and the majority were from people with disabilities. The organization was able to achieve a federal settlement in court with a huge housing management company that would not accept their SSDI payment that did not fall before the 5th of the month. We were able to set a national precedence that should be followed locally as well as in our state. Providing fair housing expertise is what fair housing does, and we have a proven track record of exercising the alternative of untimely evictions, displacement, and institutionalization by using reasonable accommodations. Thank you for an opportunity to testify.
Mr. Decker, our next speaker, please.
Mike Doyle. Commenting on 190386.
Hi. Good morning. My name is Mike Doyle. I'm a resident of Philadelphia and have been a member of the National Association of Realtors, the Pennsylvania Association of Realtors, and Local Realtor Association since June of 2006. I am here today to speak in support of Bill Number 190386. In our city today, we are facing three very critical and terrible crises: the opioid and substance use disorder epidemic, the gun violence epidemic, and the lack of housing epidemic. It is in my opinion that these three are inextricably linked by one major underlying factor, which is poverty. The need for free legal counsel to tenants is vital to helping eliminate the disruptive, stressful, and punitive nature of eviction. If families and individuals are faced with the possibility of becoming homeless, the obstacles associated with that are often insurmountable. Uncertainty and general feelings of helplessness due to the eviction can lead people to become depressed and vulnerable. I believe it is City Council's responsibility to ensure that they are doing what they can to make sure the citizens of this city have resources, which are included in Bill Number 190386, that help stave off the homelessness cycle that is almost impossible to get out of. I also believe that, as a Realtor, it is my responsibility to ensure that the rights of tenants are also being defended, not just the investor class. As Realtors, we are bound by a code of ethics that not only directs us to advocate and lobby for homeowners, but for all consumers, tenants included. We live in an unfortunate reality in our society now that seems to give power to those who are the wealthiest as opposed to those who are struggling just to pay rent. This is true not just nationally, but in the City of Philadelphia as well. While there may be some landlords that earn their only income from one rental property, it is also true that there are many, many more who not just earn income from one property, but oftentimes many, many properties. It is in my opinion that investors' and developers' interests are often defended first as opposed to those who are in need of defense the most. Our city is currently experiencing not only an eviction crisis, but an affordable housing and workforce housing crisis as well. You don't have to look far to see the effects of gentrification and new construction with list prices well above $500,000 that always include a tax year, 10-year tax abatement. Not too many people I know can afford these homes, and most certainly, the rental units in these neighborhoods are increasing their rents and pushing tenants out to their parts of the city, creating a crisis that jumps from one neighborhood to another. Thank you very much for letting me speak today, and have a great day.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, our next speaker, please.
Dan Hyman. Commenting on 190386.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Councilmembers, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Dan Hyman. I'm a staff member. I'm a staff attorney at the Senior Law Center. At Senior Law Center, we protect the rights of older Pennsylvanians. We're the only nonprofit organization in Pennsylvania whose mission is to dedicate to provide legal protection to senior citizens, one of the few in the nation. We provide free legal assistance to thousands of seniors each year, including victims of elder abuse and financial exploitation, elders facing housing crises and homelessness, and grandparents raising grandchildren. In our work, we assist seniors facing eviction under other threats to save shelter. For many of our clients, various life circumstances, whether it's a sick relative, a health issue, death of a spouse or family member, or even a change in their landlord's payment system can expose them to a late rent payment or to losing their home. You've already heard about the Stout Report and the financial benefits to the city that will flow from providing Philadelphia residents with counsel during eviction proceedings. I'd like to focus your attention particularly on the unique challenges our city's elders face when they have unstable housing. Without the time or finances to find a safe place to live, seniors often subject themselves to substandard housing, return to a previous relationship or family member who abused them, or otherwise end up homeless. For older people, losing housing instability is life-threatening. Further, we often see multi-generational families facing eviction. This includes grandparents and great-grandparents raising their young grandchildren. This is even more common today due to the opioid crisis and other addictions. With only limited time to secure shelter, older residents frantically try to line up to seek a warm place for their children and grandchildren to live. If unsuccessful, multi-generational family units are disrupted. With an attorney, these outcomes can be avoided or ameliorated. An attorney can often negotiate a payment plan to catch up on arrears or additional time. We can arrange a neutral reference from a landlord or withdrawal of the case. This bill will be transformative for older people that we are proud to serve. Thank you for your time. I urge you to vote to enact a right to counsel for low-income Philadelphia tenants facing eviction.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, our next speaker, please.
Emily Gregory.
And may I remind everybody, we are on a time for public comment. This way, we can hear all your concerns and opinions, either in favor or opposed to any legislation that we have on our final passage calendars today. You may begin.
Thank you. My name is Emily Gregory, and I'm a doctor at the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. I practice at the CareBots Pediatric Care Center in West Philadelphia. Since 2018, our office and our patients have benefited from a medical-legal partnership with Community Legal Services. As a doctor, I'm here to make three points. The first is that safe and stable housing are critical to the health of all children. The second is that, for some groups of children, unstable housing conditions can be immediately life-threatening. Third, children and families need help navigating complex systems. First, safe and stable housing are critical for all children. Large studies in the United States have found that children in unstable housing situations have worse health and developmental outcomes and increased rates of hospitalization. Second, some groups of children are particularly vulnerable to the adverse consequences of poor housing. For these children, an unplanned move, as often happens with eviction, can be immediately life-threatening. The first of these groups of children is children with medical complexity. These are children with multiple complex chronic conditions who sometimes rely on medical equipment such as feeding tubes and breathing machines. They depend on a clean environment and a stable source of electricity to ensure proper storage of medications that require refrigeration, such as insulin, as well as proper functioning as medical equipment. Another group of these children is children with asthma. For these children, living in a home with adverse housing conditions can be life-threatening. Despite maximizing their medications, these children may continue to experience daily symptoms, frequent visits to the emergency room, and hospitalizations until they are provided with a safer home environment. The cost of poorly controlled asthma includes not only medical costs, but also the educational costs of missed school time and the economic costs of parents being forced to miss work. Parents of children in these situations feel particular pressure to resolve housing problems. In the experience of our medical-legal partnership, legal representation can prevent tenant-landlord disputes from spiraling into evictions. The third point I would like to make today is that families need advocacy in navigating complex systems. In our programs for children with medical complexity, we have found that providing a designated expert nurse helps families access services they are already entitled to receive, which in turn helps to keep children safe and out of the hospital. to receive, which in turn helps to keep children safe and out of the hospital. I'm not a legal expert, but I can only imagine that families need expert support managing their housing-related needs as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, our next speaker, please.
Joe Cox. Commenting on 180969.
Thank you. My name is Joe Cox. I support increasing the scope eligible for eligible hate crimes. Too many trans people of color are facing harassment and dying. 190386, yes to right to counsel. It seems unconstitutional to me not to have right to counsel. We need to do everything in our power to keep people in their houses. Housing is a right. 190106, thank you, Squillo, for introducing legislation to fight the bedbug epidemic. Philadelphia is bedbug capital of the country. It is one of my top two fears personally. May we be judged by how we treat the least of thee and not by how we treat those that have the most of thee. Thank you to everyone that voted on November 5th. Thank you to the 8,300 people that voted for me, November 5th. Thank you.
Mr. Decker, our next speaker, please.
Commenting on 190659 and 190786.
This is official decree of the people, and remandamus quo warranto, as such requires immediate action remedy. Every week, council, mayor, governor, and others transfer private property to government, probably unlawfully. As we celebrate Veterans Day, let's not forget this. In 1775 was the oath-bound military formed to prevent all government from trespassing upon the God-given rights, freedoms, and private property of the people. Government that denies God-given rights is clearly forbidden in constitutions, laws, and Declaration of Independence. Has Attorney Generals disrespected veteran sacrifices by not prosecuting in my case? The constitutions require immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of laws, breach of fiduciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. 42 U.S.C. 1982, 1983, 1985, 1986, 1987, 18 U.S.C. 241, 242, 2381, 2384, P.A. Constitution, Article 1, Sections 1 through 28, 26 P.A. CSA 703, 705, 708, 709, 711, 712, 713, 716, 902, and the other laws listed in SCOTUS 158965, 141330, 144056 appear violated. I call on the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue. The denial of God-given 42 U.S.C. 1982 property rights for 25 years is egregious, extraordinary, oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color law government must have its charter of government revoked until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse the sworn duty to act any more than a fireman can refuse to fight a fire. The sovereign people require oath, constitutional law be enforced, and jail is required for all of you who violate oath, constitutional law. I remind council, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow all this monumental corruption.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Julian Graever.
Commenting on 190106. Good morning, Council members. My name is Julian Grauer. I live in South Philadelphia. I own two rental properties, and I support Councilmember Gimms' bill to provide legal representation in landlord-tenant court. Renting properties is a very personal type of business, and if it goes wrong, both the owner and the renter can lose a lot of sleep. But the proposed law does not detract from property owners' rights, but instead offers a practical means to settle disputes. As an owner, I see no special difficulty in negotiating with an attorney, and I think renters will feel comfortable too, knowing that there is someone on their side, someone they can trust to explain the options and suggest the best course of action. And I think that's important because these are the exact circumstances that would promote an acceptable settlement. And also, on a personal level, I think legal representation will take some of the pain out of eviction proceedings for both sides, especially if a negotiated settlement can be reached. Some property owners I've talked with think the bill provides renters with new rights, and that'll make evictions more difficult for them. But that's not true. Renters are not granted new rights under the bill. They always had the right to counsel, although some might not have been able to pay for the legal services. Councilmember Gimms' bill simply provides access to pre-existing rights by providing legal services to those who qualify. It's not a worry to me if renters have access to legal counsel. One at a time. In fact, no owner will face difficulties with the new bill as long as their legal actions are on the table.
If you could just wrap it up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Xavier O'Connor.
Commenting on 180669.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Xavier O'Connor. I think Sadie Alexander's legacy of fighting for economic and racial justice as legal advocate is important and should be honored. As part of her legacy, I would like to talk again about the Right to Counsel bill, not to disrespect the time of the council, but to ensure that you have the full benefit of important community voices on this bill. I am one of 250 local law students who wrote to City Council in support of tenants' right to counsel. As a third-year student at Temple Law, who is currently working on a landlord-tenant court project in the Sheller Center for Social Justice, I recognize the inherent power balance in Philly landlord-tenant court and understand the necessity of a right to counsel. My colleagues and fellow soon-to-be advocates also understand this. We know that landlords are seven times more likely to have a lawyer than tenants. Our own research has shown tenants don't know that they are eligible for existing services, and oftentimes haven't even been properly notified that they've been called to court. Our research has also shown that there are folks who use existing services from the help center the day of their hearings but wish that they had legal help beforehand. The legal landscape you're entering soon is unfair, but it does not have to be. It should not be, and I'm here today to advocate for its change. A right to counsel guarantees free legal services to low-income renters facing eviction. A lawyer can support renters in asserting their rights and finding appropriate solutions to housing issues. Communities of color are displaced as a result of eviction. How can you build a healthy community when residents are constantly displaced and pushed into a state of crisis? Imagine the impact that might have on a child's education. Imagine the impact on the development and the maintenance of that child's social relationships. As a Temple student, I walk through a North Philly neighborhood every day that is affected by eviction. I see the consequences of displacement and how our legal system dramatically impacts these neighborhoods. Law is an inherently elitist and inaccessible institution. As a law student, I will soon be a member of that institution in the poorest big city in the country. I have a responsibility to work with and advocate for the folks in my community. Supporting a right to counsel bill is the absolute least I can do. I see what our legal system can become, and this is a step in the right direction for tenants. Again, thank you for your time, and please vote yes on that bill.
Thank you.
George Gould. Commenting on 190106.
Good afternoon. I'm here today to talk about the Bedbug Bill, Number 190106. I'm speaking as a representative of the Philadelphians Against Bedbugs Fab, who have worked on this Bedbug remediation bill for four years, which would have required landlords to be financially responsible and remediate bedbug infestations. When the Committee of Licenses and Inspections held a hearing on the bill, when we arrived, we learned that the bill had been effectively gutted. Without informing Fab in advance, the sponsor put in an amendment that now requires the tenant to share the cost of bedbug remediation if the tenant did not report the infestation within 90 days of moving in. Bedbug experts state it is, quote, "extremely difficult to detect a bedbug infestation early on." Additionally, as is now, tenants will often not report infestation if they have to pay for the remediation. Other amendments include removing any requirements of follow-up treatment to make sure it was successful. Fab has proposed an amendment to the sponsor removing these changes and requiring the landlord to pay the full cost of bedbug remediation. The tenant would be responsible for all costs of repairing the unit, including purchasing mattresses and bed box springs encasements and other items as indicated by the licensed pet control operator. This would include replacing items such as furniture et cetera, which the PCO stated needed to be done. If the tenant failed to comply, the landlord would perform them and charge the tenant for the cost. In accordance with federal housing guidelines, every city and state that has passed a bedbug bill requires landlords to be fully responsible for the remediation. I just want to add that, and there's been a lot of discussion on the right to counsel bill, I want to thank all the council members, and in particular, Councilwoman Gimms, for all the work and effort she put into this great bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Robert Taylor.
Commenting on 190749.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Robert Taylor, president of TW Local 700, WPEB 88.1, co-host on the Jasper Jones Show, and a board member of the Friends of Wharton Square. I am commenting on ordinance 190749, an ordinance establishing the Safe Haven Law by amending Title 10 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Individual Conduct and Activity by adding a new section prohibiting the possession of weapons at city recreation facilities. It is beyond debate that people have the right to keep and bear arms pursuant to Article 1, Section 21 of the Constitution for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and of course, as part of the Second Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. Therefore, we shall remove barriers for law-abiding citizens to carry arms as a part of their ability to defend themselves and others around them. The bottom line is that the victim will always be at the scene of the crime. He or she should have a chance to protect their life and liberty, property, and those around them. More Guns, Less Crime is the book by Professor John Lott. Makes a strong case that more guns in good folks' hands, the lower the violent crime rates. Children are safer by having folks around them that are carrying concealed. And of course, because it's concealed, it will not harm or upset the children in any way. I pray that the P.A. State Legislature will limit this sort of ordinance. God bless Philadelphia, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony, sir.
There are no other speakers in the public comment list, Mr. President.
Very much, Mr. Decker. We will now consider today's bill consent agenda. I would ask Mr. Decker, the clerk, to please read the titles of all the bills on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the bill on the consent agenda. Upon such an objection, and without debate, the bill will be immediately removed from the consent agenda and be placed on our regular final-passes calendar. Mr. Decker, if you can please now read the titles of the bills on the consent agenda.
Bill Number 190386 entitled an ordinance demanding Chapter 9, 800 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Landlord and Tenant, by adding a new section, 9, 808, entitled Legal Representation in Landlord-tenant Court, providing for access to free legal representation to the city of Philadelphia's low-income residents facing eviction in landlord-tenant court. And Bill Number 190080 entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Milner Street from Duncan Street to Orthodox Street. And Bill Number 190308 entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines of grades in a portion of City Plan Number 307 by striking from the city plan and vacating the southerly 20-feet-wide portion of Vine Street from 17th Street to 18th Street. And Bill Number 190446 entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Ryan Avenue from Leon Street to Crispin Street. And Bill Number 190452 entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines of grades in a portion of City Plan Number 44S by relocating the southeasterly house line and curb line of 10th Street from Packer Avenue to a point southwesterly therefrom, and relocating the northwesterly house line and curb line of Darian Street from Packer Avenue to a point southwesterly therefrom, thereby widening said 10th Street and said Darian Street. And Bill Number 190764 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of North Bourbier Street and Master Street, North Bourbier Street and Oxford Street, Francis Street and Ridge Avenue, Folsom Street and North 27th Street. And Bill Number 190782 entitled an ordinance demanding Section 9, 205 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Sidewalk Sales by prohibiting vending along certain portions of Spring Garden Street. And Bill Number 190803 entitled an ordinance establishing park regulations in the vicinity of Salford Street and Chestnut Street, Ludlow Street and South 51st Street, Chestnut Street and South 61st Street, Sansom Street and South 51st Street, Irving Street and South 52nd Street. And Bill Number 190805 entitled an ordinance demanding Chapter 12, 2700 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Permit Parking Districts by establishing a District 39. And Bill Number 190806 entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on the 1500 block of East Wingahhockin Street, 1600 block of East Wingahhockin Street, 1500 block of East Bristol Street, 1500 block of East Kayoga Street, 4300 block of O Street, and 4300 block of Castor Avenue on both sides of the street.
These bills have been read on two different days. The question for each bill now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker should call the roll, and upon being called, each council member shall vote aye on each of the bills and nay on each of the bills, or indicate those bills for which the member is voting aye and those bills for which the member is voting nay. Mr. Decker, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Blackwell.
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Dom.
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Green.
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Greenlee.
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Gim.
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Jones.
Aye on all bills.
Councilman O'Neill.
Aye on all bills.
Councilman O.
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Squillo.
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Taubenberger.
Aye on all bills.
Council President Clark.
Aye on all bills. The majority of all members having voted in the affirmative for each of the bills, the bills on the consent agenda are passed. Okay. All right, thank you. All right. We now consider the bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final-passes calendar. Mr. Decker, can you please read the title of 190797?
A resolution also naming the 200 block of West Colter Street as Reverend Dr. Allen E. Waller Way in honor of Reverend Dr. Allen E. Waller and in commemoration of his long life and dedicated service to the citizens of Philadelphia.
And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and Resolution 190797 is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 190636.
An ordinance. An ordinance amending Section 3207 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sale of Fuel Oil to revise the standards for permissible grades and permissible sulfur contact of commercial fuel oil.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've offered an amendment for today, copies of which have been circulated to all members. I now move for the adoption.
Thank you. It has been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill number 190636 has been amended. It will be on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 190601.
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning to revise certain provisions of Chapter 14200 entitled Definitions and Chapter 14600 entitled Use Regulations by creating the use category Smoking Lounge.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Offer an amendment to this bill. Amendment has been circulated to all members, and I move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill number 190601 has been amended. It will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 190704.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land within an area bounded by Chestnut Street, Thirtieth Street, Walnut Street, and Thirty-first Lower Level Street.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill Number 190704. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for its adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill number 190704 has been amended. It will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 190786.
An ordinance amending Chapter 171400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Non-Competitively-Bid Contracts Financial Assistance by making revisions to definitions, to contract and reporting requirements, to exceptions, and to enforcement provisions and making related changes to Section 2613 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Ethics Related Matters Incorporated as part of this chapter.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I offer an amendment to Bill Number 190786. A copy of this amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of this amendment.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill number 190786 has been amended. It will be on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 190802.
An ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Mount Vernon Street and North Thirty-second Street, North Forty-second Street, and Bering Street.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill Number 190802. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill number 190802 has been amended. It will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 180553.
An ordinance amending Title X of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Individual Conduct and Activity by repealing certain provisions relating to temporary removal of firearms and adding a new Chapter 102300 entitled Philadelphia Gun Violence Protection, establishing procedures relating to the relinquishment or seizure of firearms from individuals who present an imminent threat of harm to the individual's own self or to others.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Greenlee?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gunnarne Sanchez? Councilwoman Reynolds Brown? Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Taubenberger?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. Ayes are sixteen, and ayes are zero. Majority of members present, voting in in terms of the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 180969.
An ordinance amending Chapter 102200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Hate Crimes to increase the scope of eligible crimes and to provide for additional penalties for criminal conduct motivated by hatred towards certain characteristics of other persons.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Offer an amendment to Bill Number 180969. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members, and I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. 180969 has been amended, and will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 190749.
An ordinance establishing the safe haven law by amending Title X of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Individual Conduct and Activity by adding a new section prohibiting the possession of weapons at city recreation facilities.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment on your behalf to Bill Number 190749. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for the adoption of the amendment.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill number 190749 has been amended. It will be on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution proclaiming November 16 through 24, 2019, as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week in Philadelphia and honoring organizations, advocates, and city workers for their work supporting Philadelphia's most vulnerable, introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I note that all members of council have co-sponsored it. I move for its adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing the Urban Affairs Coalition on the 50th anniversary of its founding, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolu-
And a resolution honoring and recognizing Charmaine Matlock Turner, Urban Affairs Coalition President and CEO, introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
I'm sorry. Mr. Decker, I'm sorry. Say it. Who was that again?
Introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Wasn't paying attention. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also move for the adoption, as it was co-sponsored by all members of council.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passes calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Speeches on behalf of the majority? Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to first thank my colleagues for the passage of Bill Number 180553 and also 190749, which are two public safety bills. One to create safe havens authored by yourself and the other for firearm confiscation in cases of emergency where people declare themselves publicly as a threat and dangerous. As Chair of Public Safety, I want to reiterate that those bills aren't as sexy as bike lanes and bedbugs, but they are designed to protect our babies. That over the last 23 days, six young children were victims of gun violence. Seven-year-old, two 10-year-olds, an 11-year-old, and a two-year-old in 11 months. Since 2015, 28 children, 28 children under the age of 10, have been victims of gun violence. Note, the victims are getting younger and the shooters are getting younger. Today, this body passed, and thanks to my colleague, Councilman Johnson, and yourself, and Maria Sanchez, a transfer ordinance that would help increase funding of $5 million towards anti-gun violence measures to prevent those kinds of violence. I want to state here and now that that is a floor and not a ceiling. That that is a floor and not a ceiling. I want us to also understand that in context, one of our jobs is to set priorities for budget. 23, 227 million is going to streets, which will include, you know, that article about safer streets and bike lanes and those kinds of things, which I support. Vision Zero, $6.5 million over the next six years to make sure that we are a litter-free city. The Health Department is dealing with the opioid crisis. Even the Animal Control Center is getting $4.2 million worth of contract to take care of dogs. Our babies deserve this kind of protection. I have learned over my time here that we fund what we care about. We can do colorful resolutions in council, but we put our money where our priorities are. So with that floor, $5 million, as a ceiling, let me recommend some other things we need to pay attention to during the budget process, because I intend to, along with my colleagues, ask each and every department what you are doing to make our babies safer. Whether you are hiring people in the streets department to work on fleet management, or whether you're doing ground zero to clean up lots that become crime scenes, what are you doing to contribute to our public safety? Thereover, as you know, Mr. President, 300-plus city-owned cameras. We went to other places, other municipalities, Baltimore, Chicago, other places to examine best practices. One of the best practices is live eyes on cameras, because live eyes prevent crime as opposed to cleaning up after it. We need to find a way to fund more virtual patrol areas where either a retired citizen or a trained-up civilian looks at those cameras and says, "This is about to go down, and we're going to prevent it, not just memorialize it." That's number one. Number two, if I had my way in a magic wand or a little bit of money, we need to create more credible messengers. I was from a gang. I went back up on my corner the other day, and none of them remembered me. I am but a poster on a billboard now. So credible messengers that are closer to the scenes in South Philly, North Philly, and all over our city should be employed to be interveners in these situations. DHS and schools need to have red flag symbols that I know young Kenyatta is having problems based on the post-traumatic stress of losing a loved one, and it's, we need to prevent as opposed to just clean up after. The mayor went to the Rock the Block festivities we had on the 300 block of Edgewood, which I appreciate. We went door-to-door, we fixed up, cleaned up, painted, put new sockets in seniors' houses. Over 35 properties there, but also 100 over town. I encourage all my district colleagues and at large to look at doing this. It's a, it's a, it's a good hit. But in one of the doors we knocked on, and this was on a block I was born on, 300 block of Edgewood, a young man opened the door, and he had two brothers. Quick look, you could see one of them had an ankle monitor on. The mayor came up and engaged, started talking to him and really, I mean, not just high and by, but really engaged with them. He promised to intervene in their lives, said, "Listen, I'm gonna get you down. We're gonna do an assessment of what your needs are. We're gonna find you jobs. We're gonna save you guys." I get a call from the mayor, distressed, like, you know, anybody who really knows him, he can get elevated blood levels and pressure. He said, "The young men didn't show up. What the heck?" Da-da-da-da. He said some other choice words. But he, they didn't show up to the thing. Can you find them? So I go back to the block, knock on the door, and they open the door. Now, I'm, you know, I told them, and I asked them why they didn't show up. He said, "The old head across the street said that we were doing that just for the cameras, that it was a couple of days before election, and that's the only reason why we were there, and that probably, that opportunity was not real." Their faith in us doing something from our heart for them is waning. Those young men medicate themselves through the day, not believing that they really have a future going on. So I want to thank this body for doing what it did for the transfer of funds, but we have to get out there and prove to them that we are real. I want to thank the mayor for getting on me to go back around there to find them so that they could actually apply for jobs. But our work has to be prioritized in our budget. And I support bike lanes. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Blackwell, I do. I support bedbugs elimination. Councilman Squilla? But I'm letting you know, I'm letting you know that we will fight for our children's lives, and we will make sure every cent that can be afforded them, an opportunity to escape some of this stuff, we're gonna make sure it happens. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President. I too want to thank my colleagues for the, for the journey we've been on to pass a historic right to council bill. For the last two years, this city council has been on a journey to find out what is happening in the city that in 2017, for the very first time, tipped into greater than 50% renters. We've held hearings, we've visited landlord-tenant court, we've worked with landlords, renters, our city agencies on a year-long task force, and the bill that we passed today, this historic bill to guarantee right to council, free legal representation for low-income tenants in landlord-tenant court in front of a judge, this, that bill is the outcome of this important work. And I couldn't, I really want to thank two people who I'm desperately gonna miss in the next session, council members Greenlee and Blackwell, who've been champions on housing and the recognition of the important idea that none of us are home until all of us are home, and I want to thank you both for your leadership on this effort. But I also want to acknowledge the incredible advocates, community members, people of our city who came out, who are on the front lines of seeing the eviction crisis, which felt overwhelming because it was in a private contractual realm where you're being determined by leases and lawyers and judges, and it felt so overwhelming. And, you know, there are too many to name, but that journey has been a long journey. I want to thank John Rowe from UESF and his whole team. I want to thank Barrett and the PEP team, our countless city agencies, the Bar Association to the Barrister CLS, to Senior Law Center. It was incredible to have law students come out and talk about how much it meant to feel like this is what it means to give back to our community. I also want city council to know that the Tenant Legal Defense Fund that we have allocated millions of dollars to, 70% of that money has gone towards black women, single female heads of household. You've kept a roof over a woman's head, you've kept families, you've kept children more stable in school, and you've helped landlords get paid, you know? And so like, all of these things are not contradictory. They work together. In a time when justice and our courts are at the centerpiece of our nation right now about constitutionality, about legality, and about the values of this nation, oftentimes in not the best ways, here in our city council, in the City of Philadelphia, we've done something totally different. We have expanded this idea of civil rights. We've expanded our concept of what's just and right, and we've done it at the local level, and that to me is the power of the city council. I'm grateful to each and every one of my colleagues. I want to thank our advocates, and, you know, I want one person in particular who has led this journey for so long, for decades, Rashida Phillips, to know that this is in your honor and in the honor of all of those whom you represent. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. As many of you will remember, on October the 3rd, we introduced Resolution Number 190775, which authorized the Committee on Legislative Oversight to hold hearings on exploring the Free Library of Philadelphia, stopping fines-
Free Library of Philadelphia, stopping fines for people with overdue books, and totally wiping away patrons' outstanding debt. It is with that sentiment in mind that I am pleased to announce that on this morning at 11:00 a.m., the mayor's Office of Communications sent out a press release entitled Mayor Kenny Calls for the Free Library to Go Completely Fined Free. It's with that in mind that I want to say a huge special thanks to Mayor Lori Lightfoot of Chicago, whose announcement just a few days earlier before we introduced the resolution on September 30 is what inspired our actually introducing our resolution here in council. Also want to note for the record that since Chicago made its announcement in just the first month of implementation, their, their decision to eliminate library fines, it has triggered a 240% increase in book returns. A 240% increase in, in book returns. The facts and the data and the research matter, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. And it looks like as a result of the mayor's announcement and our resolution in council that now is the time for Philadelphia's free libraries to go fine-free and eliminate the debt. But I want to note for the record, and this is why I wanted to make this announcement, the mayor's announcement does not stop our hearing from occurring on Wednesday, November 20 at 1:00 p.m. That hearing will still occur because although we can have our hearing and the mayor has made his announcement, it is actually the trustees of the library who will make that decision, and they will not meet until sometime in December. So, Mr. President, what we will do is use all of the data and the research that we actually get on the record during our hearing as we learn about those fines, which I want to note for the record make up less than 1%, less than 1% of the free library's budget. So we are going to hear from the American Library Association, the Urban Libraries Council. In addition to that, if there are residents who are listening, many of you have called us, continue to call us if you have a story about how the regressive nature of the library fines have impacted your life. Again, that hearing is on November 20 at 1:00 p.m. We want to invite everyone to come out, and we also want to thank the taxpayer-funded library system and their trustees, because they are willing participants and they are enthusiastic partners in this initiative to eliminate these fines. But again, the trustees meeting will be in December, and that is when they will be able to formally take action on this issue. So thank you so very much for your time and patience, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have two points I want to make this afternoon. One, in a somewhat fun announcement, on Friday, December 6, we will have the annual Special Olympics Southeast Pennsylvania Polar Plunge at Drexel University, 3301 Marcus Street that morning, late morning, early afternoon. I'm gonna thank my colleague, Councilman Al Taubenberger, who's participated in the polar plunge. Others have said they would, but have not always been able to make it because of scheduling concerns. So I'm putting out the challenging call for my colleagues in council to join me once again at the polar plunge on Friday, December 6, outside of the campus at Drexel University, 3301 Marcus Street. You'll have a good time in spite of the temperature outside. So please join me on that day. And part of the reason why I participate in the polar plunge is because, you know, it provides resources and helps to raise awareness for Special Olympics. As everyone in this audience and in this chamber knows that I'm a strong advocate for issues of disability, because I have a son on the autism spectrum. In fact, it's this morning we had the ADA Mid-Atlantic Update here in the city of Philadelphia talking about disability issues. But I'm gonna transition from a positive note to a somewhat more somber note. And I think if you've read any of the news reports over the past number of weeks, issues that have gripped our city have dealt with some of the good work that my colleague, Councilmember Curtis Jones, has been dealing with regarding gun violence and the fact that children have been shot in the city of Philadelphia at alarming rate. But the other issue that's also dealing with our children is the fact that in our school district, we have had an issue in reference to our school facilities and asbestos. The day before we came back to this council session, members of this body, members of General Assembly who participate in the Fund Our Facilities Coalition, had a press conference because there was a teacher at Meredith Elementary School who was diagnosed with mesothelioma, which is a cancer most notably associated with asbestos. And so that next day in council, I introduced a transfer ordinance for additional money to address asbestos removal in our schools. And in the weeks that followed, come to learn that the school district really doesn't even have the resources or the ability to even spend that money. And so that's, that's a concern. And when we think about the issues we have in our schools, not just in reference to young people being shot unfortunately in our city, but also making sure that young people have a safe environment to learn, and also teachers and other non-teaching assistants and other employees in the school district have a safe place to work. And so I've had a couple hearings, couple meetings with the school district, and alarmed about some of the issues and concerns. And right before the meeting I had yesterday with Dr. Height and other members of the school district, other staff of the school district, I learned there was asbestos in my son's school at Hill Freeman. So this is an issue that impacts me not only as a member of this body, at-large member, and representing constituents all around the city of Philadelphia, but impacts me as a parent. Having a child who's only been educated in the school district of Philadelphia, when we're able to create an autism-support class in Houston Elementary School, and now my son's at Hill Freeman. It also impacts me because when I thought about that Meredith teacher, I reflected on the fact my mother taught in the school district for 31 years, 25 years at Island High School. And every day we talk, and she, we were recalling how at Island they were removing asbestos from the basement of Island High School. So this is an issue that impacts all of us in this room, but impacts me in a, in a way that is unique in the sense of having a mother taught in the school district and a child in the school district. So we're gonna have some real serious conversations with the district going forward, because we need to make sure that we're doing all that we can, and the district is doing what they need to do to address these issues. This body has done a lot of great work in reference to trying to address some of these concerns, but we're gonna have some real serious conversations with the school district going forward about these issues to make sure that all children in the city of Philadelphia have a safe place to learn, and everyone that works or visits those buildings have a safe place to do their work as well. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. Quick and just to let you know, Preservation Alliance is across the hall with lunch for members and staff. Anybody who wants to go over there will end it on a good note. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. That concludes our speeches on behalf of the minority and the majority. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a motion to adjourn.
Oh, my goodness. Of course, Mr. President. I thought I was at the appropriate place. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, November 21, 2019, 2019 at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second that council stand adjourned until Thursday, November 21, 2019, 10:00 a.m. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, thank you all very much. Motion carried.